...starting meeting of facilities operation for beginning. Um, we're going to be starting the introductions. So hopefully you can start on my left. Uh, former owner and project chair. Uh, the introductions and everybody just go around and introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Karen Ratau, and I'm a consistent support board.
And Natasha Gras, project manager or COO.
I'm Daniel Desmond, student. For them, all board managers.
Uh, Jonathan Garcia, chief of staff.
Well, you think I'm superintendent.
Amy, I'm Sam, board member.
Transplantary supervisor.
Gary Holland, board member.
Sheldon Bass, board chair.
So manager.
I'm Kelly Norris, I'm one of the principals of architecture.
I'm Lady Almeida, uh, student rep.
John Lyons, senior program manager.
Dan Young, chief operating officer.
Uh, Diana, what's director of real estate and planning.
Liz Large, contractor general counsel.
Awesome. Now, do you have anyone online as well?
Jerry Foster, who we can match up with.
Hi, Terry Parker, communications.
All right, um, you got another walk in? Can you introduce yourself?
Hi, Andrew Scott, uh, board member. Nice to meet you.
Bye.
And we do have someone with Julia Brim Edwards.
Good afternoon, Chair. Uh, Julia Brim Edwards, board member.
And hey, everybody, that's online. Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to go over today, um, we'll start with the long range facilities plan presentation. Oh, then you want to introduce that.
I will do that. So I'll do a real quick introduction and then I'm going to turn it over for presentation. Uh, so just want to highlight three key takeaways for this presentation. Uh, one, over time, you've definitely heard if there is a big topic, do not spring it on the board all at once. So what tonight is, is, uh, the next step in wading into the water on the long range facilities plan process. So we've done presentations on long range facility plan, uh, plan progress updates over time. Uh, and some board members have also participated in some of our planning meetings. That's great. This is just the next step. So tonight's focus is orienting the group on the document purpose and its structure. It really is a big document. Once done, there'll be probably about 400 pages in total. Uh, and focusing on the process that began in 2018 and then brought us here today. Uh, note number two is this is a living document. So I want to reiterate that. Make sure everyone knows that because our programs, our enrollment, our facilities conditions are constantly changing, the document will be continually updated as well. And that this document is informational in and of itself. It does not make any commitments. We intend to provide a framework and information for future capital decisions. Uh, and then the final comment I just want to make is that, uh, we'll be back, uh, for a work session in about three weeks. So if you have any specific questions or any other information that you want, feel free to email that to me directly. And I'll make sure staff is ready to answer those questions when we are back on November 9th.
And I.
I'm sorry?
So, uh, hey, have you noticed?
Uh, I think seven o'clock, we have a special meeting at six.
Okay, and with that, I will turn over to John Lyons.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is John Lyons, with senior program manager in operations. Uh, I've had the great pleasure to manage the long range facility plan for the past year and work closely with the great PowerPoint community release.
Wow.
I think it's really great. Then turn it over to Green to walk us through the process for this document. And just again, to reiterate something Dan said, we will be back November 9th to talk about specific outcomes for the study.
Thank you, John. Um, I don't know about that, uh, that title. I, I will say that, um, it has been our absolute pleasure to be a part of this process, uh, to really be engaged deeply in the work that you were doing as a district to central equity in the work that you're doing and to kind of have that as our shepherd through this process. And as you, you heard both Dan and John talk about earlier today, that this is the beginning of, um, kind of the introduction to the long range facilities planning document. So, um, our goal today is where we can focus mostly on the process and kind of what we, um, what we did to arrive at the outcomes that will be the focus of the board work session on the 9th of November. Um, and then the goal is to take this forward to, uh, the full board for, uh, a vote, uh, at your regular board meeting on the 14th of December. So our goal tonight is to, um, provide a bit of an overview of the, of the document, kind of put it in, in the context of where it belongs in terms of all of the guiding documents that your facilities team uses and your capital planning team uses to, um, to kind of manage, um, your real estate and think about planning for the future of your facility. Talk about kind of the, the sequence of events, um, kind of what I'm calling the arc of your facility plan. Um, and that's spent a good amount of time talking about the engagement process that we used to, um, arrive at the outcomes, um, that, um, centered around what we're calling the planning principles, but really, um, allowed us to hear from as many voices as possible and, um, always center those voices that, um, like I say, are always, uh, closest to the problem and furthest from solution. Um, we'll also talk a little bit about what we've done to get a better understanding from an academic standpoint, how we can support your program vision with facilities, um, and then talk about kind of the, the process moving forward. Any questions on the agenda? So setting this in the context of kind of the, the document itself, um, you will see that, that it really consists of six sections. An executive summary that really is just that it's tries to bring together key elements from all the other sections to give you a snapshot of what this 10-year plan looks like. Uh, we focused then on enrollment utilization. So thinking about what are the numbers? Well, it's going to put the numbers aspect of this, kind of incorporating work that you've had done from your demographers as well as statistics relative to, um, who you have in your schools and who's coming to your schools. And thinking about what are the implications for those? If you're thinking about those certainly from a racial equity and social justice lens, what are the implications, um, for racial equity and social justice relative to enrollment utilization? Then, um, there is a, uh, a debrief, if you will, of your facility's condition. Uh, and while facility condition assessments weren't a part of our school work for the long range plan, um, as Dan said, this is a, a document that builds from other documents that your facilities team and your capital planning team has, um, has undertaken prior to this. So we were able to, to use that foundation and build upon it. And then really focus forward, right? What do your programs need? What facilities do you need to design? What do they need to look like to optimize performance for your academic programs, um, across the district? And then what are the implications or the, the design and planning principles that will allow you to achieve those outcomes? And then what are your capital forecasts site by site? Uh, for those of you that have gotten a physical copy, you are actually missing the capital forecast. That's about 400 pages site by site. Um, and so we decided to save quite a few trees, but not, but not putting that in the first pass. But the final document will have a site by site forecast of, of, um, all of your facilities and campuses. Today, we're going to be focused, like I said, because our, our main goal today is to talk more about the process, um, the program vision and the planning principles. So first, I want to start with an orientation on what is the purpose of a long range facility plan? Um, I will say that it is a state required document, um, for publicly funded, um, school districts. But it really looks to say what are the district's facility needs over the next 10 to 20 years? And how can we align those facility needs with what you're trying to create from an educational, from a climate, from a, um, sort of socio-emotional perspective in terms of what you want to achieve for your students, your educators, and your community at large? So in terms of the process that we use, a key aspect of it was to document the current state of your facilities. And again, thinking about those both in, um, a very pragmatic sense and then also said, what are the implications for, um, your, your, um, facilities, your current facilities on your communities? We conducted spatial dialogues with students, families, teachers, and leaders and community members to really get a better understanding of the micro problems that we're trying to solve with your facilities. And also met with, um, a, a number of your key academic leaders in different program areas to talk about what are the forecasted facility requirements? Kind of how, what do they need to support their programs moving forward for the next 10 to 20 years? And thinking about those in the context of short-term, midterm, and long-term goals. And then, um, really have those culminate in a set of planning principles that we hope advance racial equity and social justice, not just in your built environment, but can also be a catalyst and a contributor to, um, advancing those in your educational systems as well. So I talked a little bit about the fact that this is a state required document. Um, I won't go into the specifics of everything that you're seeing on screen, but there are sort of requirements that, um, are key components. When we met with the Oregon Department of Education to review this, um, they acknowledged that this is probably one of the most comprehensive, um, long range facility plans that they have seen. Uh, because not only have we met all of the jurisdictional requirements, um, but really kind of focused again on the, on the process of what we wanted to be able to accomplish. So thinking about not just the physical needs today, but planning for your physical needs for tomorrow and thinking about the capital improvement plans, your site acquisition schedule, and, um, and costs associated with that. So it also has to really think about who you have and who is coming to your schools and what, and how you plan for that over the next 10 to 20 years. And doing that in conjunction with kind of what, what's happening in, in the city. So that really is kind of the, those are the, the base requirements for what the state, um, the state requires you to do as part of that document. So one of the things that we acknowledged early on is there were, there are, continue to be a variety of initiatives that the district is undertaking, has undertaken, and is in the process of beginning to undertake, right? So thinking about all of the different, um, levels of educational system shifts, things that impact capacity, like preschools for all, and then certainly facility restrooms or facility implications like your all gender restroom task force and your climate justice policy, right? So thinking about all of these things that, um, together create impacts that have that on facilities that we need to take into account as we think about the facility planning document. And then step back in the context of, um, a timeline. So the district started this work, uh, and, and this is kind of an ongoing cycle. But this cycle started in 2018 with what's called an educational suitability study that really starts to look at the adequacy of your facilities to support the educational programs that you have. And then also looking at that from a facilities condition assessment standpoint. So all these documents, um, that you see in the light gray were foundational documents that we use to build upon to do the work that we've done essentially over the last year. That has really been the focus of the long range plan. And that will also then be the linchpin for bond planning into the future and hopefully for the, the bond campaign or the, the bond program in a 20, uh, future 2024 bond. Uh, if anyone has any questions, please stop me. Um, this is a very complicated document or a very complicated schedule. But really what we wanted you to be able to kind of focus on is that we have a lot of overlapping goals, um, in terms of our schedule, in terms of how we looked at our conversations with your, um, your, um, academic leaders, but really foregrounded that with what we call listening and learning. Kind of our, our engagement approach had three phases. It was listening and learning, ideas and input, and then outcomes and accountability, right? So really foregrounding the importance of, um, listening and creating safe and great spaces to hear from those folks who have been the most traditionally underserved and marginalized by facilities and by the, by the system itself, um, across race, across ethnicity, across gender identity, across sexual orientation, levels of abilities, um, and foregrounding their experiences in the process moving forward. So we started this in October of 2020 and will be culminating, um, here with a board decision in December. So all told, there were a variety of groups that we met with, um, consistently across this process. Um, a core team that consisted of key district partners, um, that we met with probably monthly uh, to kind of guide the creation of the document and review it at various, um, points in time. We also had a series of community listening and learning sessions, community dialogues. We did 60, um, we had 60 folks participate in that, um, at various, at various times. We, um, had, um, interviews with academic program leaders, nearly 30 of those. And then from those, we had a group that we called our CRIC coalition that was really focused on student voice, um, on getting BIPOC voices represented and had, um, parents, jurisdictional partners, community partners, educators, and students. So to start with talking a little bit about our program vision, um, so this is really hard to see. Um, but this is the, um, the list of those program, uh, the instructional programs that we, um, met with. So everything from academics and arts to physical education, to, um, your, um, science and STEM, career and college readiness, but thinking about again, what are the physical forecasted space needs for all of these programs? And then we catalog those. So you'll see, thinking about those in the context of what their current reality is, what their program vision is, and then what the capital, um, forecast are, what the implications are for capital forecast for each of those. So these are just a couple of examples, um, from athletics and special education. And then looking at in the, uh, go ahead.
About the special ed, um, on the list of groups that you met with, I didn't see a specific group. Did, were they a community or a, a focus group that participated in the development of this?
Yeah, so we had, um, we did have program interviews with the special education leaders academically. And then also in our listening and learning sessions, we had, um, specific affinity sessions with special ed parents and special ed students.
Thank you.
Um, and then so we looked at those across, again, those academic areas, but then also across your grade level bands, right? And started thinking about from, um, uh, early childhood to elementary to middle and to high, what were the implications for those? What were low, what were high priority, um, medium priority, and lower priority needs for all of those? And I want to spend a little bit of time talking about our listening and learning sessions. Um, like I said, we conducted 13 dialogue sessions and two classroom sessions, essentially in, um, December and January of last year. We had, we had, we had set a goal of, um, trying to highlight both BIPOC voices and student voices in that, in those conversations of the participants that we had in that group. We had 51%, so majority of them were BIPOC voices and, um, 31% were middle and high school students. In addition to that, we also collected online surveys and did some classroom-based, um, activities to try and garner again, um, really feedback around what was it that we wanted these facilities, um, to address? And so I'll share with you today the three kind of what we called our guiding questions for our dialogue sessions. Part, partly it was talking about orienting people relative to their social identities and then using those social identities as kind of the introduction to get people to understand the impact that the, the space in place had them, had on them based on their social identities, right? So given those experiences, those lived experiences and those identities, what, how does that contribute to, um, racial and other social inequities in the built environment, right? So we had a lot of conversations about what does that look like? What does it feel like to feel welcome, celebrated, and seen in your school? Do you feel that currently now? What are some, um, some barriers to that? And then also then thinking forward to not just talking about what your space is, how your space and how the district itself is, um, in its current state, but what does that look like in its future state, right? How can we use physical space as a catalyst to advance racial equity and social justice, right? How can we create more welcoming and inclusive experiences? What does that look like? And have those basically inform our, um, our planning principles?
Quick question.
Yes.
Um, when you talk about the 51% participation, can we disaggregate that model rates?
We do have that data, so we could. I don't have it up at the tip of my fingers. Um, but we can certainly disaggregate that for you. Um, so as part of our CRIC coalition, again, um, our goal was to have a pretty diverse group. Um, we had five students that participated, um, throughout the entire, um, all of the months that we met, um, two of whom are here today, um, parents, community members, stakeholders. We met, um, eight times, not just in, we, we traditionally had a three-hour meeting, but then we also had a couple of longer, uh, work sessions and use, um, uh, most of the meeting, these meetings were held during COVID, so we could not be in person. Actually, this is the first time I am meeting many of the, um, the, um, both district staff and, um, our CRIC coalition members in person. Um, but we're able to really leverage a virtual collaboration platform called Miro to not only conduct those on a daily basis, but then kind of keep a running history of everywhere we have been. And you'll see, um, that as Valeria talks about kind of how that process works. So again, um, I'll give you an overview of how we got from, um, those, the feedback that we got in those listening and learning sessions, um, to our, our planning principles, kind of walk you through that arc. And then Valeria will, um, sort of relay the experiences of the CRIC coalition through a student's lens. So, um, we began with a series of what we called social spatial, um, program or, uh, issues identification statements that were generated from the listening and learning sessions. So thinking about, um, what are the socio-spatial issues that we're trying to solve? And then really started with the group first to just brainstorm around how do we address those? It was a really sort of wide-ranging conversation. Um, and then as we started, we, we decided to tackle these in trios. We would spend a meeting talking about three of them to really translate those ideas into facility planning languages and then organize those around themes that eventually landed us at the 10 planning principles that we have. And what we recognized early on is we were trying to put this in a context of both, um, your strategic plan and then also your PPS reimagined is, in PPS reimagined, you had done a really beautiful job of talking about, um, you know, what you need to create a graduate portrait and what your educator essentials were and what were the system shifts that you needed to make. But we felt fairly strongly that the fourth wheel, which was within what are the planning principles of facilities to support the, the rest of those inner rings was a key, um, component of that. And so that's really what we focused on was creating that fourth ring of the PPS reimagined. So I'm going to leave it to Valeria to talk a little bit about, um, how, what the CRIC coalition process was like.
Yes, so here you'll see an example of how they, how my fellow students, and I personally was not one of the leaders of these rooms, but for example, Carmella Thomas, she was, um, one of the people leading these breakout rooms in trying to figure out what we wanted to accomplish, what we wanted to be part of the CRIC coalition, that final product, um, and really kind of what mattered to them. So that's, here I think is, we already had some certain, um, goals, some issues that we, um, that we wanted to tackle, but here we're further refining them as we do throughout. And, oh, and here, so some of the things that we were working on, we noticed that some of it wasn't really in our jurisdiction and we had to figure out what we wanted, or we had to figure out what was in our jurisdiction and what was still important, but was technically the responsibility of someone else. And this part was really interesting because, um, you know, as someone who's working as part of this, you want to be able to tackle those issues that we technically put aside and still included, but, um, technically wasn't part of the final product. So it was a bit difficult figuring out, okay, is this technically part of it because it involves such and such? Is it not? Um, and so that was a bit difficult, but I think that here we, so this is where we found the costings and it helped in, it helps in the final process because that's kind of what the major issues. We changed them a bit and we use this to do that. This is an example of one of the breakout room groups closer up. So here you'll see in purple what we added and in orange is what we organized, what we, um, what we already had. And I think in this one, no wait, in the next one, sorry. Yeah, in here you'll see that there actually was a change made in the name of the, of what we were tackling of the issue. And that's kind of part of what I saw as important because you'll see in the original that, um, you'll see in the original that it was just tackling playgrounds and in the end it ended up tackling all spaces that needed to be more accessible, especially physically, but also for, um, meant to be disabled people and for people with social disabilities. And yeah, much of the process was just organizing it because having, having the simple parts helped us expand on what we had to do to actually tackle those issues and it made it a lot easier for the, well, I believe that it made it a lot easier personally for the groups to actually figure out like, oh, what might be a possible solution to this and helping us bring this on all of that.
So, I mean, part of, part of what you see in this, um, in this process is we started with the socio-spatial issue. Then we had a series of conversations to break those down into thematic elements. And then those elements created those planning principles. So this was a process that we used to arrive at all of the planning principles that I'm going to, um, share with you this evening. So, um, again, we tried to keep this in the, um, format and the, um, style of PPS reimagined by creating a, um, a value statement, right? Amplify student-centered spaces to promote autonomy and engagement. There is an icon that goes along with that. And then there are descriptions that, um, that talk about kind of the value that this has to PPS and how it can manifest in the built environment. So we did that for all 10 of these planning principles. Um, second one is to support Black Indigenous people of color students and families through targeted investments. Promote building and site features that advance the district's commitment to climate justice. Disrupt the gender binary by affirming a gender spectrum in program spaces, services, and experiences. Promote culturally dynamic environments. Create socially meaningful and inclusive spaces that support students with physical, social, and behavioral disabilities. Cultivate welcoming schools for BIPOC families and community partners. Exemplify planning and design features in service to comfort, belonging, physical health, and social emotional well-being for students who have experienced trauma. And center community spaces for marginalized students and families. And the last one was amplify flexible and adaptable building features in support of collaborative hands-on learning. So these are essentially the guiding documents that, um, that we hope form the fourth wheel that starts to bring your facilities in greater alignment with your educational vision, um, PPS reimagined. So for us, I think that, that really is the, the key of the process that we've used. The conversation we'd like to have with you is around these guiding questions. What stands out to you about this process? As you think about moving this document forward, moving this process forward, what aspects of that process do you think is the most valuable? And what, if anything, would you do differently? And finally, uh, when the team comes back to present to you in a work session, the document in, um, in greater detail, what are you most interested in, in learning about? I think that's it? Any questions? Stunned, silenced, none.
When was the last time we had a ring of lights in the state bandage for locking facilities?
We're, we're required to do the document every 10 years, so we are on track to complete that. Our last long-range facility plan was 2020.
Great. I'm, um, curious. I noticed earlier who the, um, kind of the list of stakeholders in the hard copy, which I forgot to bring to me. Um, how did you get such a high turnout of students, especially BIPOC students?
Yeah, I will say your community. Yeah, I will say your communications department was a really great resource. Connected us with, with principals, really tried to, we use social media, we took us out across a variety of platforms to try and, and we tried to do it in a way that, that highlighted why those voices were important and how those voices could then have impact to shape the future of PPS facilities, right? And I think it was in that invitation and in spreading that invitation to the, to the brightest audiences of good that we were able to kind of get those sessions. I think the other thing is creating opportunities for people to speak in their affinity groups, right? So that you aren't just in a room with everyone, but you were in a room with people who shared your buildings and plans and created some safety and some bravery in those spaces. It helped as well.
I love, specifically, I'm curious about the social media because, you know, students are on social media.
I think, and I may just add, I know that our office of student, student voice and community engagement also have student interns, particularly focused on, so John, you can steal a little. Their role was, because, so one of the things that we're focused on in, in that office is bringing on for students to help with staff projects and staff strategy. And so that's along with the facility planning where getting off the ground and screening, you know, play a pivotal role. So John, do you want to share?
The timing worked out really well. So we have three student interns support us in the CRIT Coalition and they were facilitating meetings, so they were leading some of the breakout rooms and they did just an absolutely fantastic job those six years. And also have to spread the word about what we were up to, which I think helped a lot.
These were paid, you can make it.
Oh yeah, I, I mean, I feel like there's an element of, like, who's the messenger and using tools that students are using. Like, I'm happy to see that the high turnout is.
Yeah.
And this was like not incentivized participation. I mean, the interns were paid, but it wasn't incentivized.
That's correct. So there wasn't incentivized in terms of the, the listening and learning sessions. And we actually used those as recruiting tools for the CRIT Coalition as well. So that is how Valetia came to us. It's actually, she attended, you know, didn't really even know what this was about. But knew that it had, it had some, you know, implications for the school that she had gone to, Grant. And so thinking about kind of that, that design process and wanting to provide some voice to that, and then we roped her in. We said, okay, once you hear, we really want to leverage your voice and, and she's been a fantastic part of the process.
Do you have? Oh yeah, no, I'll go ahead, guys, I have to.
Um, I think it's great that we got more students and that's really useful. What's our plan for continuing that engagement as we continue the process? Obviously, student voice is that biggest impact we find.
Yeah, I'm just looking at me. So this document is really intended to serve as a stage for future planning processes, servicing the bonds. So our hope is that we can begin to iterate, use this as a foundation and build upon, and refine what we heard through this process. So I, I hope that the, the statements that we generate through this process are compelling and resonate with those students, so that they'll be encouraged to come back.
Yeah, and I just may add to that. I mean, I think, you know, directors, you have incredible opportunity. As we know, our generous taxpayers support, you know, development and the growth of our schools and building and our land. And so as we engage in that conversation, or of course, the next, you know, 30 years, this doc for 10 years, what you, you phrase that, 10 years, you look at me and I, you guys know. The next 10 years, this document will start out as a tool so that when we're engaging students and hearing directly about what the leaders for future bonds, we're able to, to, to take that conversation from there. So we look forward to having those conversations as the board considers new bond measures.
It would be, this is like wild game, but it would be really great to engage kids that are five years old or six years old in part of the process because it's a 10-year cycle as a way of introducing to the practice of architecture and public access. And that is a wild idea, but I used to work for the Parks Bureau and we actually did a focus group with kids under seven. And it was hilarious and really practical. It turns out younger kids in parks want slides and playgrounds to be like popping with yellow, with purple and, you know, adults want things to match and blend into the landscape, you know, to means and concrete colors. And so we are able to use that input from those six and seven-year-olds to parks.
Jill, do you have any hand raised?
I, I did, thank you. I wasn't sure if I should jump in or just raise my hand. So just in response to the questions, I really like the fourth wheel concept and the, what came out of the, the, the smaller groups and those principles. So check, I really like that. I think especially from a long-range standpoint, they provide some, not guardrails, but I guess aspirational touchstones for our, for the work. So I love that. I had a question, like two questions just about like future process. I'm not sure I understand what the term outcomes says. The team, says, the slide says the team will review outcomes on November 9th in its work session. So I'm not sure what outcomes are. And then the second question is about the board vote. And we just got the document yesterday and of course, had a board meeting last, late last night. So I haven't had a chance to like dig, do a deep dive into the document. But I'm, at least the beginning point described it as more of an informational document. So I'm wondering why the board would be voting on it? Is that a statute? Just a question for the general counsel. Is that a statutory requirement? Or are we accepting the information as a platform to going forward? So those are like the, just the two questions I have and I'm sure I'll have others once I have a chance to read it in more, more depth.
Great, so just to address your first question, outcomes, please. So we'll have our, our friends from the academic side of the house to talk about their specific capital forecasts at the meeting on November 9th. So it's really digging into, to what are, what are the athletic program visions that we're talking about, CTE program visions that we're talking about. So, so that's the plan for November 9th. Regarding the, the board vote, there is no statutory requirement that the board adopt this, but it is extremely helpful to have a single datum to move forward into bond planning. And we can pivot from this document, absolutely. We can go up, down, left or right. But it, it really serves as, as a kind of stable reference point for future bond planning.
Yeah, I guess the, just, and thank you for the description of the outcomes. I guess I'll, I'll want to better understand that, the concept. And then on the, like using it as sort of the framework. And I looked through here, it's like informational, but there's also some prioritization. And so the question is like, if, if we adopted it versus accepted it, are we like adopting the priorities? Or just accepting the information and the, say, the planning principles and everything like that versus the very specific prioritizations, which, you know, there's, there's a lot of decision points in there.
I don't think there's anything that ties our adoption of the long-range facilities plan to commitments that we make future bond, it's a separate process. It's just a guidepost and a lot of data. There's people in that process as well. There's nothing binding, connecting those two decision-making processes.
There, there are no projects listed in, I haven't also got, I, I got the hard document last night. Haven't had, had time to dive into it, but there, there are no promises in terms of projects in, in the document, as I understand some.
But there are priorities.
There's priorities, so it's a list of priorities. I haven't, like you said, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely priorities, which obviously then you're starting to get into, you know, a whole set of decisions. And if we, if say the board were to adopt the document, is are we adopting the priorities? Because I think, you know, depending on where you sit, things that have been identified as a low priority may be in the community's mind, a higher priority. Like, I'm not seeing in the middle schools, Harrison Park, identified necessarily, or I missed it. And so I, I just, I want to understand kind of what the framework is as we move ahead, what it means. I think it's great work, I'd say. I love the, the concept of the fourth wheel and the planning principles. But also just want to understand what we're being asked to approve.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just say, it's correct that there's, there's no specific decisions or commitments. This is really informational to inform future decisions. And so I think we, we can kind of pivot or play with what is that, right, what is the board doing here? You know, we think if this is a seminal document, it's, you know, done every 10 years, we're going to keep it updated. We want the board to be comfortable with it if it's, if it's accepted versus approved. I think we can talk about that if it is necessary.
And how are these priorities being shared with students?
That's a great question, and the answer is they haven't. So the priorities have been derived from our academic leadership and, and they're intended to be refined through future bond planning processes. One of the really great things about doing this document is that we didn't have to say no to anyone. So that if we were to, to sum up the projects in, in this document, it would be trillions of dollars. So future bond planning committees are going to have to make serious decisions around priority with specific budgets and funding.
Yeah, and what I, I think I appreciate about the process that I made is that our academic leaders, you know, we, you know, as a school district, are really big and have, have been explicit about the importance of the academic instructional core. And so to, to really elevate the voices of our experts, like Senior Director Tascans and some of our chief, our chief academic officer and a number of folks across the organization that have really lent in their, their expertise to really help you articulate the built space environment and what it needs to look like in order for PPS to offer that academic, that rich academic experience that we all talk about. So I think that's also really important to kind of elevate that, that this is really like leaning in on the expertise of our, of our leaders. And it doesn't mean that it's set in stone. It means that it is a starting point for when the board, the board considers the next bond or the next, you know, set of projects that, that you are all able to, to weigh, you know, and have a starting point versus, you know, a, we don't know where to start conversation. So I think that's really important. And I really just want to appreciate our, our academic leaders for leaning in. And really, what I was really proud of is to see the, the way in which operations and academic really integrated around this project.
And I would just add to that, that, back to the conversation about the community engagement, which is pretty extensive for an exercise like this, including students.
And I think, you know, so to get back to your question, I think partly, partly why we, we set it up in the idea or listening and learning ideas and, and input and then outcomes and accountability is because we see this as kind of a cycle that then keeps going. When you go into bond planning, you think about those same pieces. So you're able to bring back, this is what we heard from students in the long-range plan as we think about bond planning. And that's where I think the value of accepting this document and creating kind of the, the message from the board that this is the process we want to follow to the goal. There's value to that.
So what I'm interested in is how do we continue that student engagement? Obviously, this is something we're going to use for bond planning as well as this plan's set 10 years. So values and what students want is going to be very different at that point in time. So how are we planning on connecting with students to improve this planning and keep that up today? Is that something we're seeing here that we know?
Absolutely. So I think this was a, a good testing ground for many engagement strategies that we use. And we're able, we were able to hone our engagement skills within operations through this process. So we were very successful and we'll continue to learn and, and learn how to connect with students through this process.
Have a dis, did you have one she's saying? Because was there going to be like some standing meetings to continue that engagement to the students on ongoing basis? Are there just thoughts in this process?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think we're still about a year out from bond planning in earnest. So I think we'll, we'll need to get back to you on that. What does this, what the case would, would look like? It's a great question.
Yeah, but I would just, I would, I think those are great questions around engagement. I mean, I think as the, as directors know and as it's expressed by directors, at least the last five years that I've been here, the importance of elevating student and community voice at all aspects of the, of our organization. And so that is being infused in all aspects of our work as we continue to improve our, our, our ability to confidently listen to students and adopt and adapt to, to the shifting things. So absolutely, you know, we will continue to engage with our community throughout the next decade, right? That is core to who we are as a public school system. And so I think that's really important, whether it's the bond, as we prepare for the bond, as we continue to reiterate what's happening across our buildings. Again, this is one data point and it's, it's a data point at one point in time. And it's finished, it's already, you know, if you will, it's already old information, right? And so it's just a starting point for, for the conversation.
Great, great. Any other questions regarding the, on like, since this invitation we've done?
I'll, I'll have questions after I read it.
Just one question. So you dealt with students direct. Um, how, how did that go? Like, did you find overall students were very interested in learning about this and that it was very engaging or was it, okay?
Yeah, I think so. We, we, we had a, a couple of different forms. One was in classroom sessions directly. And where teachers gave, typically the teacher would came to a listening and learning session and said, this is fantastic, I want to take this back to my class. And so we were able to engage with students through that vehicle. And then students like, like Valetia that just signed up to come to a listening and learning session. So to a certain extent, they were kind of opted in to the program, right? And so it was people that self-selected that they were going to be interested in talking about this.
Great. Any other questions?
Well, someone who's involved in bond planning 2012, 2017, and 2020, I can express deep gratitude for having this, this core of information that we really haven't had in this level of detail or thoughtfulness or inclusiveness before. So it's a game changer in terms of bond planning.
Can you, can you say more, why, why is it important?
Uh, I mean, we had a long-range facilities plan in place, but it, it wasn't exhaustive like this and it didn't, we didn't have up-to-date information even about our facilities condition index at that time. So we were basically started from scratch and part of it was just getting input from the community about community priorities, but it really was difficult to balance that with the concrete unintended needs of the district in terms of the state of our facilities. So to, to have this as a resource when we embark on that is just changes that whole enterprise total.
Jonathan, I, I would add that as someone who was at a different position at the time when the first long-term, long-term plan was created, totally was unaware it even existed. And now to be a part of this one and just thinking, anecdotally, like there was a bond pass that didn't address the athletic needs of our district, right? We just got a billion dollars and we have schools that didn't, don't have the athletic needs being met. And when we talk about the inequity across our district for our BIPOC kids, we can just go right to athletic facilities and you can just see it. Where you are one part of the community, your parents get paid to take you wherever to get to something. And other places, we have concrete broken up on where your school, where you play at, right? So the ability to be on the, I guess, the ground floor of this one and the learning curve that I went through and then the great experience I've had working with John and then the, the rest of the committee to see that whether it was special ed or schools and planning of what they want to have in the next iteration of schools, those things. I, I honestly don't think that happened prior. And I know that the person in my position didn't, was not a part of it. So I, I think I, I'm, I'm excited with whatever comes of it. I know that athletics won't be left out because we're a part of the process, but I know the other school leaders feel the same if I could represent the OSP right now. So thank you guys for that, John. Thank you very much.
Let me just add to the line now, wait, uh, for sharing the planning principles. We've seen it lots over the years, these projects have gone away, lessons learned there, uh, or the things that even our student leaders, whether it's how we think of this, that lens of sustainability, sustainability slash university style, um, or athletics, or as we saw in some of our later projects, making sure there was a full complement of visual performing arts facilities. Uh, so the fact that we're cooperating, you know, what I said in the beginning, right? We, we have educational specs or facility specs. It feels like now we have educational specs refreshed, like how a campus supports problematic to get some of these first students.
Awesome, awesome. All right, any other questions, concerns, queries?
It looks like a huge body work. I don't know how long, just mention how long we've been working on this, but I, I can't wait to dig into it. I love that there's space for student art. There's, there's some incredible art regardless of where you're at.
And John, do you want to talk about that art?
Yeah, so we, we developed a brief with the, the director of visual arts, um, Senator Torres School. So we have a number of classes that are participating fully. So we'll have those in the hopefully final document, I think it's square quotes, square quotes deliberately, um, in December. We'll have the document populated.
Fantastic. I, um, was able to tour, uh, the art class during COVID. It was really, um, astounding how much art was created during that time from people's bedrooms. And we just, the creativity was coming out and, uh, it was amazing.
Director Hollins, I noticed that Director Edward's hand is raised.
Okay, thank you. Director members?
There she comes.
A lot of the way is already right there for math. If you have any other questions, talk about comments.
Just so our processes, we have one that board our session and then coming to board that first meeting in December for some kind of approval or adoption or blessing or something.
That's great.
Acceptance, yeah. Which I, it is, I think that's important.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the, the audio was off, so I didn't hear the answer to my question. Sorry.
We didn't hear a question.
Uh, my question was, um, are we going on to the other, to each of the individual sections? Or was just, was that the broad overview of the report?
That was the broad overview. So we'll dig into the, the next section.
And then how do we access capital forecast information between now and then? Or is there anything slightly abbreviated from the 400 page?
Yeah, so the hard copies that you have, um, is the abridged version. So we'll have a, a kind of mid-level analysis of each configuration. Uh, what you're missing now is the individual site summaries. So we have between three and four pages on every single instructional site in the district. So it's, it's quite extensive. We're going through it now, just, um, making sure all the Ts are crossed, dots, Is are dotted, make sure all that information's sound. I can give you those as soon as, if they're ready, hopefully before the November 9 meeting, but I can't make promises yet.
I, I, I actually think that would be critical before our board work session. Um, like maybe we shouldn't have our work session if we don't have that.
Well, I think, uh, what we want to focus on at the next four sessions to really adhere correctly to my academic experts, uh, from central office, really articulate how the, how, uh, what's the connection between, uh, operating of the space and the classroom. And I think the, the, right, and the third piece to this capital project is really looking at, you know, what is happening? What is our assess, operational assessment of each building or each campus? And so think very, slightly different conversations. And we want to focus the board's conversation at the next one around the academic, uh, connection to, to the, or the, the connection to the academic.
I actually have, um, one, one piece of data that, um, yeah, I'd be interested in just a little bit deeper dive. I'm not on mute. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, on page 290 of the bound copy, um, there's a grid and it has, um, school population by free and reduced lunch and the cut, the cut points are 40, 20, and 0. And I'm, I, I, I know there's a, a big band between 40 and 100. Um, and I'm wondering if we could get a, a, a cut point above that because 40, it seems like there's a big difference between a school that has 40% free and reduced lunch and a school that maybe has 80. Um, so just a, a request for some, just a deeper dive, looking at, um,
Director providers, is there a reason why you're asking for that information? How would that inform your, your thinking here? Just, just to make sure I'm understanding the request.
Yeah, so, um,
Based in our profiles and our budget book. So if anyone's interested in that.
Okay, can I explain why I'm asking? Um, because I, but when I look at the sort of K8, uh, and sort of middle grades inequity, and, until the opening of Cal, of Kellogg, the, the lowest income zip codes in the school district, um, were essentially the, the zip codes that still had predominantly the old under enrollment K8. And so I, I want to use sort of this matrix, um, historically underserved student and, um, income as a sort of, um, the, the, the sort of matrix criteria for looking at facilities and prioritizations. And it just seems 40 is, um, there's a big gap between 40 and 1, and 100. Um, so that's, that's why I'm curious. And I could go look at the other document. I just think it would be useful to have it all in one place.
Yep, so we can absolutely do that. The reason 40 was chosen is that's the, that's the cutoff for title one. But the exact percentages will be included in individual site summaries.
Okay, yeah, I, I get that, um, title one. It's just, as I say, a school population with 90% students on free and reduced lunch is different from one with 40, right at the cusp. Just another data point for equity purposes.
All right, any other question? Do you have any more questions, Director Evans? All right, well, here is no more questions. The questions, uh, we'll move on to the next presentation, which is a
Okay, as I get this going forward, I'll just reiterate, uh, if any, uh, if any committee members or board members have any other questions or specific requests about longer source plan, please feel free to tell me directly. I'll get it to the team. That way we can be prepared to answer those questions when we're back on the night. So next topic, uh, this is really just a brief primer for the final, uh, item that's on tonight's agenda. So the intent here is to simply provide the committee just a quick refresher on the preservation, maintenance, and disposition of real property policy and hit on a few high points as it relates to the next item. Uh, the policy relatively new so that it could, to equip a refresher. Uh, this really should only take a few minutes. If you have any questions, feel free to stop me as we go along. So, uh, overarching policy and real estate transaction, uh, uh, objectives. Let me try and move this off so you can see. Oh, no, you can see up there. My screen's a little more convoluted. Uh, so overarching objectives include managing property for short, intermediate, and long-term needs, maintaining flexibility for future purposes, and providing revenue or other benefits to support district functions. Uh, the policy notes, uh, in the event district property does not support and is not expected to support the district's mission now or in the future, uh, the superintendent shall recommend disposal of the property to the board for approval. Long-term leases, uh, which are defined in the policy as greater than five years are expressly preferred over property sales. And additionally, long-term leases should include termination rights in the event the property is needed for district needs. Uh, the general process for sale or other conveyance of real estate is one superintendent whose the property does not support the district's mission now or in the future, uh, the board determines disposition of the property for most of the district's overall mission. And then the superintendent brings a recommended sale or other conveyance to the board for approval. Uh, in leases, uh, if the district elects to enter into a lease agreement, either a short term or long term, the district shall pursue maximum market value unless the board adopts a resolution to accept and offer below market value based upon specific criteria. Uh, that criteria includes, uh, uh, includes that the below market lease can first significant benefit to the district, the community that serves, and/or furthers the goals of our RESG policy, uh, and agreements with another party or an official, with an official connection to the district or its students. And additionally, a number of various factors are listed for consideration that are of course all in, all in the policy. So that concludes just a really quick refresher and overview. Uh, I will be in just one moment turning it over to Dr. Collins. We will, I'll walk through the last item. I just want to make a, a quick note that, uh, as, uh, Director Hollins is going to walk through the Albion Sports Complex, uh, district has not done the detailed analysis of the concept, but, uh, we are happy to, I hear your feedback, what information you might need from staff, uh, after your discussion. So any questions?
Thank you, Sam. Refresher.
Director Hollins, would you like me to present for you? Does that make it easier here?
Um, I can, can you put it on the stand though? Yeah, I don't have the access to them. Awesome. So
And then just tell me when you want me to move.
Okay. All right, so this is something that, um, I'm very excited about. Um, this is something that I think for, uh, the city of Portland and more importantly, our kids at PPS. Um, this is a transformative, uh, project that, um, yeah, actually have a big community to do, um, at this point. Um, and I want to use like examples from our, see, tentative parts, you know, really having a nation's goal. Um, this falls right in line with those things. Uh, I think they're going to switch. Next one. All right, so what we have here is on the left side, we have the property where it stands, or how it stands right now. Um, it's been vacant for over 20 years, um, and the, the land has been there. Um, and, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the land to the, on the top, to the north of it as well. Um, these are facilities that are owned by, you know, parks and rents. Um, these facilities are not, um, in optimal, uh, conditions, um, as well. And so when we talk about this project, um, we should look in, including the cities, um, are drilled land as well. Um, to the right is kind of what our nation's goal looks like in the flesh. Um, you know, I want to go and talk about a little bit about the building. Um, the building is a 364,000 square foot, um, sports complex, um, originally named Albion Sports Complex. That is after, um, the original founding of Albion Sports Program, which is civil, um, this 364,000 square foot complex. Um, just talk a little bit about the, the building, um, first. Um, we wanted to, when we first looked at it, we wanted to make sure we had a net zero on the facility. Um, now on the top, you have a green roof, um, of course that improves our air quality, um, especially in our urban areas. Um, and then it reduces the energy consumption of the green roof and it's reusable green space. Um, if you can see, they got walking paths, um, on top of the roof there. Um, and also when we added this sort of power as well, um, in order to get into that net zero piece, um, of course it's the floor to reduce our carbon footprint, um, but it's also to reduce our need on electric grid that we have. And then also is there to lower our, uh, operation, um, expenses as the operational portion of the complex. And so that's just a little bit, uh, about the idea of what we are looking at doing, um, on the building side. Um, moving to the next slide. So our benefits, um, to the local community and the city and of course, you know, PPS is that, you know, this is going to be, uh, the standard of the art building, uh, standard of art facility that is not anywhere on the, on the west coast. This will be actually the biggest, um, facility of this time on the west coast. Um, we want to make sure that it was located in the heart of PPS. Uh, where the majority of our kids at, um, we want to make sure that all 49 plus thousand kids have access to this, uh, this facility. Uh, we want to make sure that accessibility was important. Uh, as there is other, uh, facilities that anywhere you go around the country, a lot of those facilities are out where you have to get there by car or other ways. We wanted to make sure that when we talk about accessibility, it is, um, it was really accessible. Um, when we looked at the sites, um, we looked at the tri-ment routes and see which, um, routes were the most used. Um, this complex sits on two of the main routes, um, in the city of Portland, um, for tri-ment usage. Um, the 72, uh, which is, they consider the equity, uh, route is because it, it dridges the gap between southeast Portland and northeast Portland. It runs from, uh, Capitalist Town Center all the way to North Portland. And that's the most used route, um, which averages around 40,000 equity riders every week. It processed with the 75, which is the third, third most ridership of 26,000. So when we really looked at accessibility, especially for our youth and our kids, we wanted to make sure that they had access to it and it wasn't out somewhere where, um, where it was hard to get, get to and actually use the facility. Um, we're looking at, you know, this is, and specific to PPS, um, and this is what in some conversations that we have with, um, PPS staff as far as helping to relieve PPS, um, facility deficits. Um, that was one of the first conversations that we had, um, to do that. When we, we had conversations with Dana, right, and, um, Arsenal Haskins, which was, they were great in really talking about the needs of PPS and what our needs were. So we wanted to make sure that we incorporated all those needs, um, for PPS. Um, we have, the facility is going to have, it's an indoor facility for free, for year-round activities, 360 days, seven days a week, um, accessible, um, availability for, um, the complex. Um, we wanted to make sure we had attractions for state and nationalized sporting events. Um, a lot of times, especially here, um, importantly, we have to take our kids out to go to these events, uh, to get national attention, to get coaches and college attentions, um, intention from our youth. With this facility here, we can bring them to us. Um, our kids don't have to travel, for instance, to Bay. They don't have to travel to North Carolina, um, for track meets. They can, we can bring that stuff here and get those college coaches and those that, um, exposure that they don't normally get. We can bring that here. Uh, one of the biggest things that is important, um, for us to look at this too is the job creation that it can have. Um, the internships are big opportunities for our kids. Like this is a facility that will have career paths for our kids moving forward. Uh, when they're looking at college applications, they have opportunities on to volunteer. They have opportunities to, to earn money, um, as well as they're taking on their career paths. And we, that's really big for us, um, is to make sure that this whole standard is children's, the whole complex is children's. Um, when we look at, um, adding and extending some of PPS's sports offerings, um, a lot of the schools now don't have some, some facilities like lacrosse, indoor track. So we wanted to be able to have a facility that you can, that they can benefit from. Swimming, some schools have it, some schools don't. So some of this stuff is kind of, we want to kind of put everything in to be able to have and expand some of the sports offerings. One of the things too, I was looking at, as we were doing research around this, is that what offerings do our, our PPS students just have for our elementary kids, you know, and we looked at collaborating with like the city with their bidding bond program. But we can be able to do things like that as well, so as far as expanding the offerings as well. You know, the main thing is that, you know, this is a, Portland is a epic center of sports. We have, it's one of the three main sports companies here. We're talking about fashion, we're talking about athletic, just athletic buzz around us. And we wanted to harness that, you know, we, we have Eugene, but we don't have anything here in Portland, you know. So we wanted to make sure we harvest that energy for our, our kids here. And recently, that has came up is the fact that this gun violence that we've been having. And statistically, there are studies that show that when you have a facility of this kind, it helps reduce that gun violence, because kids have something to do, they take pride in their, their community, they take pride in their neighborhoods, and they take pride in their city. And so as we, when I'm looking at this, and more recently, this has been more of an issue, we just see that that is a basically, an advantage that, that our kids can get from this. Let's go to the next slide. So this is what we have inside, this is a picture in collaboration, both be in collaboration with Portland Parks as well. We have twelve indoor basketball courts, we have twelve indoor volleyball courts. We have three indoor soccer fields, because you know, we can rain here, so we want to make sure that we have access and ability, access and ability to do stuff when it's raining. We have two indoor baseball practice fields, it's a three hundred meter indoor track. We have weight training spaces, we have on the top, on the top left side of the baseball field, we have another practice soccer field. We have a soccer and football stadium with stadium seating that goes around. We have, on the top corner, on the top right corner, we have four tennis courts that is very underused, that we can potentially have. And one of the things that was brought up and from PPS as well was looking at getting a lap pool. And so with this collaboration with the city, we're able, we have room to be able to offer that as well, as long as courses funding and stuff is available. Let's go to the, oh, let's, also with the four baseball fields there, we're looking at technology that is a retractable mound, so we can actually make the baseball fields actually be double as softball, softball field as well. They did it for the two thousand and twenty-eight Olympics in Tokyo. And the technology is really not that difficult, we're just really having to apply. So we have the potential of not just having two baseball fields and two soccer fields, I mean, two softball fields. We have the potential to have four baseball and four softball fields as well with that. Let's go to the next slide. So financial considerations for this. Before pre-COVID, we looked at this for around a hundred and seventy-five million dollar project. When we added escalation, it was a little bit over like two hundred. Today, we don't know what increases construction costs. We, we have to figure out what those costs would be, and that's what we have to look, look for. The financing, our goal is to make this a collaborative project. We want to do a public-private partnerships. We want to be in partnership with, of course, with PPS, but also with Parks and Rets, the community, and other organizations like Sports Oregon, that is signed on to partner with us on this. The biggest structure of this is going to be income-based. Our income revenue structure is going to come from rentals, it's going to come from events, sponsorships, and also rentals of the thing, what makes this unique is those five buildings, five white buildings on the outside are actually retail and commercial buildings. And so the community in that area, which is called Twenty-second Avenue, is this corridor, we can actually increase the rental rates and stuff out of that, because those are commercial leases. Community spaces, and then there's, there's a lot of things you can use on form. So when we talk about the financial piece of this, our intent for this, for this conflict will be for the district not to be charged. If we're giving enough revenue stuff in, if we're giving enough monies in, they'll, they'll tend it for not to be able to cost PPS to use the facilities. But right now, just to make that plan, as we still are building everything into the project. There are federal, state, and city funds that, that we can tap into in this. There's funds, we talked with, some of the projects in federal funds, there's city funds, there are public funds right now, that we can actually tap into to spearhead and start this, start the ball rolling on this.
So there hasn't been any secured plans?
No. Because we're still in the concept phase, so a lot of these things have to be built in and figure out what's what. And so we'll kind of get into that in the next slide, in the next slide. So this is kind of what it looks like indoors. On the left, you have the indoor running track. On the inside of the running track, you have a soccer field that can go, that can be implemented in there. We have both facilities as well for indoor. And then on the left side, we have our eight basketball courts. Inside, you can't see it here, but where that back wall is, is actually where the sun comes down, where we have living trees. On the other side, there's another four basketball courts. Okay, next slide, please. So these are, this is some of the working team community business leaders, organizations, supporters of this project that we have. I had to make sure I let people know that, so this is not an Albina Vision Trust project. They are supporters of this project, but it's not their project. A lot of our leadership leaders that are supportive, are supportive of this project, they're not necessarily working team members of the project. So I wanted to make sure I made that clear. But we do have some of our working team community and business leaders that are on our working team. And we have Michael Burke, who was head of Portland Chapter. Over the, over COVID, he was one of the ones that brought in high-level athletes to do impromptu track meets with a lot of the professional Nike athletes. He was one of those who brought those on our end. Of course, Sports Oregon, we talked with Jim Essel, he's one of our working team members. Jeff Miller of Travel Portland as well, we're looking at the travel and the, the travel dollars that could potentially come in. And looking at, going to try to tap into some of those hotel revenue streams as well. We've talked to multiple neighborhood associations, which is the Kelly Neighborhood Association, which is on the east side of the park, and Concordia Neighborhood Association, which is on the west side of the park. These are all supporters of the project. Of course, we're including NWA CP's important chapter, National Association of Northern Contractors, which is in. These are all working team members. Nobody's coming from the baseball as well. And then, of course, this is a question of other supporters. We probably had hundreds of conversations with community members and other organizations, and we probably had thousands of conversations with, with our kids, who were, of course, ecstatic about the project. We can go to the next slide, please. So this is our, our kind of request. We want to grant the, we want to request that our buying of program have a lease option on the problem. Allow us to further progress to the next steps and make this a vision for our kids. And going to what John says, by giving something like this, our partners will look at it as a level of certainty, and a level of support from the district, so we can go out there and start getting seed money, start doing the necessary things that you need to do financially to get this, this ground off the, off the, this project off the, off the ground. We talked with the city of Portland, we actually talked with the city of Portland, 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 and they're very excited about the project and the opportunity to be part of it with us to do this as well. So I think it just really is up to us to really make that commitment to our kids and say, hey, this is what we want to do for you guys, and this, this is how we're going to go ahead and move forward with that. So that's the, that's the end of the, we didn't do the next slide. These are some of the kids that we have in our program. We take our kids to National, which is in North Carolina, we took twenty-eight kids one year, taking them to Florida, Texas, Kansas. These are some of the places that we are able to expose our kids to. And we just want to make sure that all our kids can get that same exposure and that same experience. And that ended our presentation. But I wanted to invite a couple, a couple important people that's in my life, who was a part of this program when it first started back in nineteen sixty-five. When we look at, you know, dynamic duels, you ain't going to find a better dynamic duel than, than these two coaches here. Leon McKenzie and John Mays have combined for, I don't know, a hundred years of coaching experience, plus and over fourteen state championships, because the most of any high school in Oregon, I believe. And they were part of the program when it first started. So as I tell everybody, I'm only a branch in the league off of this tree, as I want them to come in the kind of history and who Phil Walton was. As well, so I will introduce Mr. McKenzie and go from there.
Well, thank you, Gary. I'm Leon McKenzie.
And I'm John, John Mays.
And yeah, I think we might be over a hundred years of experience.
Well, he might be over.
Well, Leon, could you also say that you're PIL legend, you're Hall of Fame college student, can you give us a, so we know who you are?
Bragging and stuff like that, but I do, it's, it's some things, be before I start just talking about the, the roadrunner program, I just, since I am retired now, I just, at this moment, I just couldn't resist, you know, not only at, you know, Mays and I coached together forty years, coached with Wilson, then we were at Benson for thirty-five years. And then during that time at Benson, you know, you got to keep in mind, we're, we're a city school and sometimes don't have all the resources of some of the schools now. And we were still figuring out a way to be as good as any school, and not for one year, two years, three years, but for almost over thirty years, as good as any team in this state. And, and it really was about building relationships and starting with kids when they're young and taking them all the way through. But the thing we talked about that we're most proud of, because we know most kids are going to be through with their athletic endeavor by the time they're twenty-two years old, they have to go to college. So what have they learned when they've been with you for that time? Ninety-five percent of all the kids, and we get to research on it, ninety-five percent of the kids are went to college, are either in college or professionals in the community. Matter of fact, your head of the math department here that works for the public schools, Patrice Woods, is one of our runners and one of the road runners also. But I can name hundreds and hundreds of her that are professional. And so it's a platform. We just use, we just use the athletic stuff as a platform to teach other more valuable lessons that can carry them throughout their life. And most of the kids are buying in, and, and maybe because the love and the trust that they have in us, and so. It's been a, you know, I, I wouldn't imagine none of this would have happened. Now, in terms of, do you want to add to anything? Okay, well, in terms of the road runners, almost the high school track and road runners is synonymous. Because of all these kids, we've had numerous, numerous state champions, All-Americans, and almost all of them were road runners at seven, eight, nine, ten years old. And then we're able to, you know, build their prowess into a college-level athlete. And even the ones that didn't go to college, went on to college and did great things, so. Now, just a little bit about, he said Phil Walton is sixty-five, I think it was more like sixty-one?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two now. Right where we sitting right now, we say, why, why do you call this Albina? Well, right where we sitting was Albina. Back in the days, before the Coliseum, before the freeway, before Emmanuel expanded, this was Albina. And a lot of the African-Americans weren't, weren't, just because of red lighting, weren't allowed to live too much past Seventh Avenue. So much all your African-Americans lived in this corridor during that time.
We lived on the other side of the, I lived across the street.
Yes, yeah, my house was right on the side, right here on Kirby Avenue, right there, right by Elliot, it was Elliot. What you call Tubman now was Elliot School, that's where I went, right there. And so, you know, Mr. Walton knew that at that time, there wasn't a lot of opportunities for a lot of the kids. So he took it upon himself, not only took it upon himself, it was very much grassroots, he spent all his money, all his time, for years. I never forget the time he came by my house and picked me up, he told my dad, I, I want to take your, your son to a track meet. And, you know, my dad said, alright, go ahead. And since that time, we've been kind of hooked to the hip and, and, you know, he gave us all exposure to areas we never, we didn't ever know. Go to Gresham, you know, we take us to Gresham, Lake Oswego, it was like a new world to us, taking us to meets like that and doing stuff and and so, and he just kept giving himself for, you know, up until his death. And I think he's been passed away over ten years now, but up until his death. And you should have seen his memorial, it was overflowed. And almost every single person said, it hadn't been for him, I don't even know where I would be, he saved my life. All because of, you know, his selfless attitude and giving and giving, giving out of his own pocket. So as we moved forward, and, you know, we were doing this off a string for all these years, we always spending money. And then we were actually able to form a board, establish a five oh, five oh one, three C, and then Gary came aboard, and the first thing he said was, this is not sustainable. The way you guys are doing is not sustainable, I want to help you keep this sustainable. And so that's what we, we're trying to do, so we're not spending money out of our pockets anymore. Because now we've been able to get enough donations and stuff to be able to do what we want to do with the club without having to go into pocket. And so this vision, you know, for the, you know, multi-purpose facility is, you know, you know, you think about it. The math club is the only facility, but that's, that's for elite, that's for elite clientele. It's not for the average, you know, kids who live in the neighborhood, middle class, lower-middle class kids. And if this can be pulled off, this will be just tremendous, tremendous cool for the neighborhood and, and kids, and I think it will put us on a whole new track, especially in the northeast side of town. So. Don't you think you want to add?
No, no, no.
So, and the one thing John and I dig on, because we, you know, we talked, we own a, also, we didn't put up here, but we, we also have several branches in our club, so we have a walking team. And we on the walking team, it's the way we can keep these, you know, we trying to stay on the planet as long as we can, so we, we on the walking team, so we do Hood to Coast. And if you ever did Hood to Coast, you know, it's the middle of the night, man, nobody around, I'm in the middle of nowhere. But, you know, the training keeps us going and, you know, keeps us alive, and so that's a part of, that's a part, and we're going to keep adding arms. You know, my wife is, she's still, she's retired too, but she still does drill team and, and pageant stuff at King, and she has a lot of kids involved, and so she's probably going to come aboard, and we'll just keep adding arms to this, so it won't just be just track and field. It'll be all kinds of endeavors, but the goal is to have kids find their niche and get them involved, you know, get them involved in something. I mean, it's terrible for a kid to be, to be born and then die and never know what their, you know, what their talents were, what they could have been good at, you know, and we, we want to help, even though we getting older, we want to do all we can to try to help and, and try to make this facility come to fruition. Any other? So that's uh, so that's kind of, uh, uh, it in the nutshell, but again, I'd just say, uh, when you start getting older, as me, and, you know, he already seventy, I'm right behind him, uh, you, 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 you feel really good. I mean, I, you know, you can't, we know the kids that have been coached by their family, they come over all the time, they call, they forty, fifty, fifty-five years old, and they still send letters saying thanks, you know, you know, and these are kids that one family, most of them poor. Uh, but what we knew about them, we said, this person don't even know, they, they got awesome talent. They can do, we, we, we con them and believe in, they can do anything you want to do. You got everything you need. We just got to create, uh, try to create a new mindset for you. Uh, and when you've been living long enough, have we seen it come all the way to fruition, and we want to try to keep this thing going. So with that, I know I only have five minutes and I kind of ran over that, but I just wanted to give you a feel for who we are, what we're doing. And, uh, we want to keep adding to kids, those are my little babies right up there on the screen. And, uh, some of them are gonna be really, really good too. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
He's better than the interrupted elder. Do they, do most of your kids are they P I L, P I L athletes or they come from?
Well, because of gentrification that's going on in the city, uh, we've got, we've got kids that come from East County. And actually, when Mr. Walton was alive, he, he started subbing out in East County a lot during, uh, you know, he had something to do. And he started bringing us kids from East County and Vancouver, so we got kids from all over now. Yeah, all over, all over the county. And so, and that, that's fine, fine with us.
Um, I've got a couple of questions actually. So, one, obviously this is in partnership with Albana, and now that we know that students come from different districts, how will the access to this facility change between PPS students versus say that students in other districts? Can you take part in that?
So the access, um, so one thing I love about Albana is that they never turn anyone away. So whoever wants to participate, they have been able to participate. Uh, and so the access piece there, that's what we want to continue. If, if any kid from P I L wants to be a part of it, we never turn anyone away. We want to continue that same, um, access. So we want, no kid will be denied access.
And will there be any changes between what a PPS student versus, because obviously this is in partnership with PPS. We're making a financial commitment to the project, so what does that look like, I guess? Because I don't, obviously, like, if we make this financial commitment as PPS, then we want PPS students to be able to have that access and maybe, I don't want to say have priority, because obviously this is a center for everyone, but what does that look like? What if we get this, a large number of students using this, that some PPS students don't have?
Yeah, that's a good question, and right now, that's what we're trying to build on, is what that looks like. Um, and that's where we want to move forward. How, how do that look, what do that look like? What kind of financial, um, contribution PPS is gonna give? Uh, right now, we're not looking outside the land for any financial, uh, any financial input from PPS. I think that we have enough partners and collaborators that, you know, we, our goal is for not to have PPS have this good money on it outside of the label.
So, uh, uh, we basically free this.
Correct.
And but doesn't the business plan assume that PPS and Portland Parks and Rec would be the primary, uh, financial, uh, sponsors?
Yeah, so that, when we, we came up with that, that business model, it was one of the first people. And that was coming out of conversation that we had with the district and with, uh, the city of Portland. As we have moved along since two thousand and nineteen, when we started this, this process, um, some of those, um, contributions were just kind of conception. And that's about what was a conceptual, um, plan that we have to give. Coming out of the conversations that we had, possible conversations that we had, you know, what PPS could do, what they couldn't do. Beforehand, this was before the bond, uh, the new bond came out. So it was anticipating that maybe we'll get some money from the bond. And from my understanding, and anybody correct me if I'm wrong, I don't know if they gave money for athletics to the bond or not.
Just in conjunction.
Yeah, so that's kind of how we was looking at it, but I don't know if it's incorrect, correctly or not, but that's kind of what we thought, oh, we're looking for a billion dollar bond, athletics can get something. And I don't know if they got it or not, but, you know, that's kind of where that came from, um.
So, so do you, um, you guys foresee that this financial model could be successful without financial partnership from the city and Portland Public Schools?
Explain it.
Like if, like, the business plan that I've seen shows Portland Parks and Rec and PPS as the primary financial sponsors.
City was one third, I believe.
Well, um.
But yeah, but remember that before COVID. So as we, as we look to build this out, that's when we really gonna be able to get those real hard numbers. Um, on what that would look like. As far as outside the land, uh, our intention was maybe not to have, be a standalone, able to get the dollars from other, or, I mean, other entities from the standard or the state, the city as well.
So what you're saying is you can't really begin any of those conversations unless you have control.
Correct.
I had something, a question about what was, I saw that business plan too, I, I think it was a draft.
Yeah.
Um, that, um, I concerned me because it said PPS students would have to pay for access.
Correct.
And, you know, I used to work for the Parks Bureau, we cited these community centers, and the Bureau is really good at that kind of community center programming. You know, they're, they're good at, because what happens is when you put a park at some place, the dog, you know, dog orders needed, um, kids needed, and so there's all these community conversations that have them. Um, that's one of my sticking points is that the retail activity on, on land that's public and also the, uh, fact that our students, um, would be like, would not have any priority. They would have to still, maybe not the students themselves, but the district would have to pay for this.
Yeah, so that's one thing that we looked at is sustainability, and I'm glad you heard, parts of, you know, their model wasn't sustainable, how they did it then. As far as the personal, that's how they went out to the new bond. So we really wanted to look at how do we be sustainable, um, how do we get those dollars in? And so how do we build out the, the new, the, the business model, um, more in detail? We can really work and figure out what that would look like. Um, one thing you gotta remember is that this is an income-based facility, this is not a tax-based facility. So we're not getting tax dollars from, in the city or tax dollars from bonds. This is gonna be a, an income-based, um, facility. So as we are looking to do that, we have to look, take up more of a business model approach. What does that look like to be sustainable? And if that means the parks and the city, I mean, the PPS have to kind of reduce rate to make sure that it's sustainable, then that's the model that we have to use. Um, but our goal and our intent again is going through rental use, through sponsorships, through activities and events that we have there, that would be, um, enough profit that we, we projected to make from there, then we will not be charging, um, the district fees. So we have to build that out, you know, we, it just kind of, as a concept, we have to still build that out. Sorry, I ended this. Director Graham, would you have your hand up?
I do, um, thanks for calling on me. Um, this is a more in sort of just, uh, a follow-up, um, request. So just given, uh, when I was on the board the first time in two thousand, the district had just closed Whittaker for radon and mold-related issues. And essentially, the site then sat there, uh, for the next twenty-two years. Um, and, uh, Director Holland shared the, um, sort of Albana sports vision in July, uh, with me. And apparently, the conversation with the district had been happening for a longer period of time be, before that. Um, and then, um, earlier this week, the city of, um, Portland, um, asked about the Whittaker site, uh, for a safe rest, um, location and asked for a lease. And then today, in the long-range facilities plan, when people have an opportunity to do a deep dive into it, uh, they'll see that the city, that, uh, PPS staff and the draft proposal has, uh, the Whittaker site being a potential athletic hub. And so, um, you know, I'm sure the neighborhood is interested. And if you look at that land sitting there for twenty-two years, really not in service to our, our, our mission, um, or our, our students, um, that there's sort of three different, um, concepts on the, on the table. And I would be interested in the staff providing some sort of like matrix with some of the criterias of things that we should, um, just, I say, as, I, I know this conversation about the safe rest village, um, that city's proposed is gonna be coming before the board and then today's, um, initial proposal, um, the long-range facilities plan. But like, how would we think about this, you know, what, what are the athletic needs? What is Parks' long-term plan thinking? Um, Director Constan to pass, um, already, you know, raised some of those sort of financial terms. But for each of those, it's gonna, for each of the different proposals, they're gonna be slightly different. So it'd be helpful for me to be able to, um, sort of assess that against each other versus each one is separate. Um, you know, something separate, since they all focus on the same piece of land. And then also, um, to hear from Parks, um, about sort of how, you know, how each of the, the, the different, uh, proposals fits with their sort of long-term, uh, mission and vision. And, you know, I get, and then, you know, most, most importantly, sort of, um, benefits to, uh, PPS students, um, since we have a fiduciary responsibility to, um, to our students, um, and to use our facilities to, to their benefit. So that would be helpful for me to, to see versus looking at each one of these, um, proposals sort of in, um, in isolation. Uh, because obviously, well, they may, they may not be mutually exclusive, um, but it's, it's hard for me to tell that based on what I know about the proposals. So that would be helpful for me as an individual board member.
I, I think, well, the superintendent's not here, so Jonathan, you can, I mean, that's a decision for the superintendent about how to direct staff in terms of due diligence on, on our proposal. But, um, I think one, one area that is important for us to look at is to go back to our recently revised real estate policy, which is really quite different than it used to be. And it actually embeds, um, frankly, a real bias against, uh, uh, giving up our properties, whether it's a sale or a long-term lease to external entities. I mean, the last thing I want to do is kind of bring on this break, because Gary, you and I have talked about this and it's like, it's a beautiful vision and it's obviously something that is, would be so beneficial for the community. But, um, I think it's for us to put it in the context, um, the frameworks that we have in place. So there's our real estate policy and then the needs that we have identified for our students, which are some of your same athletes as well. And what Marshall has outlined in terms of, we, we know that we have a deficit of, um, athletic resources in this district. And we've known that for a long time. And frankly, I, I'll take a little responsibility for this, I think it's, it's really an oversight that our prior bonds have not included any, um, you know, discrete funds for athletic resources. Since it's, um, and especially that property that is, that is sitting there.
Yeah, I, I guess not, sorry to interrupt Director Constan, but I was on the policy committee when we, um, revised it twice, so I'm familiar with the policy. I'd like to hear from staff, I mean, it seems like, um, if we're going to have a meeting on the city's proposal to put a safe rest village there, um, we have to have some sort of basic criteria. There, this is one thing, we've got, I say, proposed today, um, a, another use for the site. And it, it just seems like it would be a useful tool for the board to have, um, and the committee to have, to be able to look at, you know, the, the different proposals through some sort of standardized criteria. So I guess, unfortunately, I can't see the room, so I, I don't know what staff are there, but it seems like a question for either Dan or, or Jonathan, if the superintendent's not there. I was, I wasn't directing, I was asking, and certainly if I'm gonna be asked to vote on something, whether it's the city's safe rest proposal, this or the facilities plan, that, um, I would want to.
That's fair. Okay. Because we can't see yourself, we have four other people who needs to, uh, respond as well, I want some questions. So I'm putting in a room so I can get to a couple of the questions, okay?
Can I quickly respond or?
I don't know, okay, I want to hit Andrew, my director.
Thanks, um, well, so actually, I wanted to say, I, I think the idea of more analysis is great. What I'm concerned about is whether the board has to find what we want staff to look at. And I think that's actually what Amy was, was beginning to get at, this sort of layout, right? Because I think, I think again, looking at this, at all the ideas versus the real estate policy is good. Looking at student benefits and needs is good. Beyond that, though, I, I'm just a little, I just don't want to send staff on a, on a wogus chase and like, do a matrix out of, out of one. So I'm almost wondering if the board needs to do more work defining what the criteria you want, you know, to, to sort of, to sort of do the analysis. Um, because for me, I mean, this is, I, first of all, this, like, this is, it's like, you sort of look at it and you're like, wow, that would be incredible. And I think our job is always to sort of, what's the highest and best use of, of, of our, your assets, right? And so that's, that's the way I sort of want to approach it. So again, I, I, I like the idea of additional analysis, I'm just, I want to be sure we're being clear about, about what it is.
And Director Scott, I'm completely open to, that, it's, it's just an idea, I mean, I'm not conceptually, these are the specific criteria. So, you know, uh, if, if you have ones or the board has ones that wants to define, it just would be useful, I think, to have something, some way that we can, you know, assess each of the different things that are gonna, you know, potentially come before us. So totally open to that and not wanting to send staff off and doing something. But I, I do think we should have some sort of standardization.
My next question actually was, was more of a, and for Gary, it's sort of, it's sort of a question of whether, whether it's right for this, for the district to be sort of thinking about this discussion. What I hear you saying, which the one that makes sense is, you know, you know, again, someone said, you need to have sort of that, that lease option, that access to land in order to, to do those other things. But I'm also wondering if as a board, we can make those decisions without knowing some of the details. So it's a chicken and egg issue with me. And, you know, because we talk about like, like, who's gonna have access and what's the cost gonna be? Because again, we've got to be thinking about that. So I'm just, I guess what I'm wondering, is that really essential at this point with the business plan? Because it feels like there's a whole bunch of questions that, that I know I'm gonna have that, that it sounds like may not be answered for, for a while. And so that, that just, it makes it a tricky.
And, and that's one of the reasons why we did a lease option versus just a straight lease. So the lease option is just giving us the ability to lease the land at a, at a, at a certain date. Uh, and so that's one of the reasons why we did that option, uh, lease option purpose, just a straight lease. Is to say, okay, you know what, we, we have some commitments because, you know, we're willing to start digging into, uh, and building this thing out. You're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that's gonna take place. You know, you, you know, so it's simple to be, because of the environmental use of the, of the space. Um, we have construction, architectural costs, construction costs, all that stuff costs, right? And so, you know, our, our, our group, you know, want to make sure that we have something that shows PPS is, is in support of this. Uh, and, and this is one of the reasons why we sent the L O I a couple of, uh, about, um, two months or a year back. Because the L O I was a non-binding, uh, agreement to say, hey, we support what you're doing and we want to work with you guys more to get this done. And we didn't hear anything back. Uh, and so we kept going and getting faith that PPS is, was gonna be partnership, partnering with us, or at least going down that road. So at this point, our heart is like, well, we need something more now, but we didn't get anything back from the district before. And that's one of the, one of the lease options is out there now, like, if we're gonna go spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to do the, of revised business plan, especially with the COVID restrictions, if we want to do our construction costs, especially with the cost that is going up in construction, we want to have some kind of assurances that we're not just spending our money for nothing, right? Especially when we've been going down this road since two thousand and nineteen and we haven't really got anywhere until this year. Um, right, and so that's kind of assertion of that. And that's one of the, and that's why.
This is your meeting. One, one more, it's just, it's more of a clarification. I thought I heard you clarify a little bit, but I just wanted to be sure, one of your slides in here seems to indicate that we have four board members who are supporting the project. But I heard you sort of caveat that a little, and I just wanted to make sure we're clear on the record. Are the folks listening on that slide supporting this project or?
Correct, that's what I was, that's what we was told, I was told personally that they, they liked the concept of the project. And not that they were voting on it, but they liked the concept of it. And not that they weren't voting on it, but they liked the concept of the project.
Well, that's, I mean, I told you that too. And I'm not sorry. I'm just sharing with people.
I, I wish only one.
No, but so. Sorry, Michelle, go ahead.
I, I also, I, when I saw my name, my heart dropped a little bit because it seemed like I was committed to something that I want a lot more information about.
That, that is what it appears like.
And just as a chair, I felt, I was like, oh my gosh, so I just.
Well, when I, when I, when I, when people say, when people say they support something, it wasn't a commitment, it was just said that they support the, the project. That's all they said. From what I, that's why I put it under that, hey, you're saying you support the project, not you're committing as a board chair to say, I'm going to vote for it, but you're committing to, I mean, you're supporting the project. Now, if you want to change that, that's something different, but I just went by what people told me and I take, and my, that's how I am. I just take their word, you know, for what they worded. If they say they support the project, I guess for me it wouldn't matter if the name goes up as supporting the project as opposed to not saying that you're committed.
Well, I think what's tricky there is that supporting the project, then the project has an underlying assumption that this district asset is being made available. Similar for Parks and Recreation.
Well, it's not easy because when I, when I talked to Carmen Rubio and, and she was like, yeah, you can put our name, they have a commitment, they're just supporting. They're right, same thing, niggas not, same thing. We support the project, but they're not necessarily committing park resources to it. Maybe, maybe I just have a different take on that, but I just look at that as a support, not necessarily if you're going to commit your vote or whatever that is, the district to say, hey, this is what you're doing. And that's, and that's how I put it on.
And I think that might get a nuance because, you know, the, the Monsieur Rubio is in charge of parks and she, she has no jurisdiction over what you do. We're, we're neighboring, we have lots of properties that we butt abut, PPS and Portland Parks and Rec.
I think that's, you know.
So I feel like there's a lot of conversation and, you know, you're introducing a concept. As a concept, I think it's great because it's like on, on that piece of land where kids in our district would have to, or the district itself would have to pay to use it. And that's where I have a sticking point. I have a sticking point with retail also, even though, you know, it loves a, a development piece, jacks are great, training is great, but that's, that's my sticking point.
But this is interesting because for 20 years, the land just sat there with no benefits for our kids at all.
Yeah.
And, and we had three bonds that went through and there was no investment or no fees as far as athletic. So to say now, well, we have an issue with our kids, they're not using anything right now. They're, they're not, they're not paying for nothing right now, it's just an empty lot.
So if I, if I may, because I do want to address Director Brimner directly. So I actually want to acknowledge that, yes, there are three, three conversations being had about this property. And I want to make sure that folks understand and for the record, that the two, this, this Alvinas Sports Complex was something that you, Director Allen, is bringing forward. One, staff has not done an extensive analysis. We reviewed the same documents that most directors have, I believe. We haven't done anything beyond a in-depth analysis and a few conversations that we had with you. Similar with the city, the city reached out to us directly and inquired about this property. So the staff has also not done an analysis. We have a perspective about this property because as you all know, as you all heard in the last hour, we have been working on a long-range facilities plan to really understand and listen to our academic experts like Marshall Haskins, really unpack what is the future need of our school system. And so I think to Director Brim's, Edward's point or, or question or, or ask, you know, I think what we need is a little bit more, we, we will do the analysis with the information that is provided to us by these parties and we will do our, our best to, to provide a staff recommendation based on the information that we have. But what will be helpful is to get a, a deeper understanding of what is the collective board's approach to, to all of this, understanding that, again, our academic leaders and our, our folks here on the ground have been for the last year, really articulating what the next 10 years look like for our school building. So I just want to make sure that there isn't any confusion that staff is engaging with third parties outside of what has been provided to directors to date.
So I have just a quick question and that would be, what would it look like? I loved the renderings and especially like the net zero, there was a lot about that proposal that I liked. What would it look like to be in conversations, and I don't see this happening anytime soon, with all of the parties that are, that have an interest in the land, including PPS envisioning? Again, I haven't read the long-range facility facilities plan, so I don't know what I'm talking about. But what, what would it look like to, to create a vision for that property? And that would have to be cooperation with all of the parties that you mentioned and.
So that, so that, I guess that's what we.
And, and then, then have the conversations about who controls and who benefits financially and who's putting the money up and, and who gets to use it. And those are, I've been involved in this process before, it's a long process.
Well, I, I, I don't know how long process if you got money, like Eugene went up, you know, I think it's all relative as far as, you know, how you want to do stuff, you know? Like I said, Haywood Field went up and it wasn't, it didn't take a whole long time to be. I think that's just how.
Public land or?
Yeah, public land. Um, but that's one thing you've been trying to do for, since 2019 is how do we engage those conversations so we can have those, those discussions? So we can have that. I mean, we've been doing since 2019. It is not like we just came up with this six months ago and say, hey, this is what we want to do. No, we've talked with Director Haskin, say, hey, what do PPS need? This is what, this is what we're going to try to put in here. We talked with Dan and said, hey, this is our project. So we have been trying to engage with the district to do that, to have those conversations, to have those meetings, and we haven't got there. So to, to, to come back and say, well, we just, we need to do that, unlike we haven't been trying to do that, it's, 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 it's really frustrating, you know, for them. All we're asking, and we're not asking for a decision today, we're not saying we want to send this to the board today. We realize that it's a process that we were told that we need to go through. All we're just asking to go through that process, put it out there for everybody to understand and then start working through those quest, those, those questions of far who pays, who have ownership, who have all, all we're saying is that we just want a commitment at some point from PPS to, so we can go down that road, so we're not just spending money for, for, for nothing. Because we're not asking PPS for any money at this point. All we're asking for is an option so we can go spend our own money to do this.
Well, I'll, I'll be straightforward with my primary concern, which kind of ties back to our revised real estate policy, which I, I would say I'm very much in alignment with, that we need to be protective of our assets and we need to maximize our assets for our students. And I think that this, I think that this project is completely aligned with our mission and, you know, what we all want to do for kids. What's uncomfortable for me is the prospect of the district relinquishing control of, of a valuable asset and in an, in an area where we have needs for our own students, where our athletic department has a vision for what they want to build out for our students and it would be a PPS asset for PPS programming that we control, where our students are prioritized, where it's, there are no fees associated, there's nobody that we're, you know, jostling with for access, all that kind of stuff. So for me, that, that aspect of control is, is a really important right, criterion and value for the school district.
And I, I totally agree with that. And I think, you know, you guys have had control for 20 years and maybe one benefit has happened for any of our PPS teams. So to worry about control over something that we haven't made a priority, it is, it's really interesting to me that we want to have control over an empty lot that has not benefited our kids. We have to put any money into this from any of the bond matters, any stuff as far as from that, that point of it. But now is, well, we want to have control over something that's not benefiting our kids. You know, that, that's just, that's frustrating, that it's kind of weird that that's in there. Second of all, when you look at the, the plan, the long-term facilities plan for the hub of the minimum things that they want to provide in the athletic hub, what we're, you're talking about 10 acres of PPS land. When you collaborate, you're talking about 23 acres of usable land and space and field for, for, for our kids. So if Portland, okay, we, we just want to focus on our 10 acres and maybe going back here, we want to put a double white field or soccer field. You're only going to get one there because there's not enough space. But if we collaborate, now we have two soccer fields, we have four baseball fields, we have indoor facility, you're getting way more bang for your, the dollars that's going to benefit, directly benefit our kids than you would if you went at it alone. That in itself should lead to say, hey, you know what, let's collaborate and do this and get all the stuff that's on the list versus, well, we only, because of the size that we have, we're only able to get a soccer field and, and a football field and an asset for our kids. We owe our kids more than that. We owe them more than just, hey, we want to just do a football field and a soccer field because that's the amount of, amount of space we have. We owe them to give them what they need and what the athletic department needs for our kids. We owe them that. And to say, okay, well, we only need 10 acres and we're going to forget the other 13 acres that we could possibly have to help our kids, it, it just seems like it's, the priorities is just, is shift. Our, our priority is our kids, not who owns it. The property of our kids is to have the access, not who controls it. The priority is our kids, not what entity controls the property because all our kids are benefiting.
Do you know if Portland Parks and Rec's master plan or any of their early bond planning work speaks to Burn Hill Park and their vision?
Yeah, so I'm talking with, this is before Dickless passed away. One of their visions was to put a community center on that, on, in the, on the east side. And so when we brought this idea to them, that's I think why they really embraced the idea of that, because it goes into them wanting to get a community center on this side as well. And so we, that's who we have been in talks. And one thing is frustrating because when we had talked with them back in 2019, one of the things that they was talking about is putting this facility on the parks line that, that just has. Well, we missed a vote on that because for whatever reason, we missed a vote on that and it half overwhelmed me. That could have been resources that we had potentially to do something like this that would benefit our kids and not go back to now and you're talking about a, a, a long-range facility plan that, from what I, what I heard today, doesn't have a path forward, doesn't have financial backing as far as what we want to do with the land compared to something that we're looking at collaborating and having a path forward.
But you also don't have a, but you also say you don't have a financial path?
No, well, no, what we said is we want a commitment from PPS, so we do have a financial path, but we didn't want to spend money to do that without a commitment from PPS.
You do have financial resources for this project.
Yeah, we have financial resources to start the, the groundwork for this project.
In the business plan, are there, are there any investors or?
Right now, it's a, it's a profit partnership, that's our ideal. All the money has been coming from the nonprofit Alvinas Sports Complex.
So this has got the breakdown as PPS and Portland Parks and Rec is the two primary financial partners, followed by private investment, followed by new market tax credits, followed by debt.
You know, again, that's a process, that was a process that's a drive.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying. Oh, I was going to say, in terms of a path forward, you know, we don't have a path forward, I would actually push back on that because the, the point of this document is to be our grounding for our bond planning. And so, you know, we can never take for granted that our voters will continue to pass our bonds, but we've got a pretty good track record and we have, you know, we've started with the, the biggest trust with, starting with our high schools. And so now the, our future bond efforts, our investments are going to be much more diffuse. We're going to be able to invest in many, many more smaller scale projects, which we haven't had the ability to do other than just our absolutely essential, you know, pieces like roofwork and some of those smaller projects. But so our bonds are going to look very different, even when we, we may, maybe we'll redo a few old schools, but they're smaller schools, they're middle schools and elementary schools. So assuming that we continue our bond program, which is absolutely our assumption, we are going to have the ability to invest in, you know, what we see in here on a pretty grand scale. So I do think that's a path forward.
And I think, and I think that would be great. And, and what, what would that look like if we can collaborate on, on this, on the project like this for our kids with that?
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I, and I wholeheartedly hope in the next five years that we, we, we counterparty for our athletes. That would be awesome because, you know, we have, you know, we have a need for it. And if we can use that bond money, that would be great to say, oh, you know what, we're going to add this bond money to this and now we have a bigger options and we have more options and more fields for our kids. Because I think that would be great. But as of right now, and what historically has happened, we haven't had the investment. We have, it hasn't been in the last three bonds that's been over almost $2 billion. We haven't had it, so.
Yeah.
Even though it could have been in there and for some reason they're getting out, we're not necessarily 100% that when the next bond come up, that we have it in there and for some reason it'll get taken away and then now we wait another three or four or five years before we try to get something that we can try to really get now.
I mean, I love the idea of including in our bond planning, public-private partnerships. We've always talked about it and frankly, we haven't done a great job of it. We haven't been able to leverage much other investment or much collaborative thinking. So I mean, I would love nothing more than to identify a bond project for 2024 that is a collaboration with Portland Parks and Recs. I mean, like I said, my issue is that in our real estate policy is about control and prioritization for our students. But as far as like, community partners and, and other public partners, I mean, I think that's what we should be trying to do with our bonds all day long.
I agree, I agree. Awesome.
Any other questions? No, we got mine. Thanks for the presentation and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for joining me. Thanks, guys.
Do you have someone who can pull a comment? Oh, hold on. Did you have someone sign up for public comments?
No, that was them.
No, we have one more person who can pull a comment.
You have someone else sign up for public comment?
We have Mike Rosen saying, help me out.
Oh, I didn't see my name on this.
You might not know her.
Do I have two minutes?
Yes.
I'm going to wait till the chair. Thanks for waiting for that meeting.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mike Rosen and I'm the board chair for North West District. We represent 5,000 families, many of whom have children in Portland Public Schools. And I'm here to comment on the ET Transition Plan Draft. It's my understanding that the Facilities Operations Committee will be reviewing it on November 17th and then we'll refer it to the full board, or refer it to the, the list of the work plan. It's been 31 years since the passage of the American Discipline Act. The district has made a great investment in accessibility for our schools by declaring upon putting roughly $30 million into creating accessibility for all first floors of our buildings. But the total cost for accessibility is $100 million, so there's $70 million left to achieve the promise of accessibility in all of our schools. Yet this draft plan proposes to take 20 years to achieve compliance. We refuse to wait this long, 53 years. We refuse to wait this long, 53 years is too long. The next fund needs to invest the remaining $70 million to make all schools fully accessible. Full accessibility must be achieved in a much shorter time. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Um, I have a question, well, we can agree. No, for you.
Oh, yes.
Do we have on our agenda for one of our next meetings, just updates on the master planning processes for Ivy Wells and Cleveland and the design process for Jefferson and the Center for Black Student Excellence? Because I feel pretty out of touch with that work.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have any specific on the work plan for it. It's just going to be a part of the regular quarterly bond update.
Could we have that as like a, a briefing next time on where we are with?
I think they're going to get together, so you can all be that part of it.
Okay, the 2020 bond.
I'll schedule us for early next week.
Okay.
Okay, I'll do that right now, before.
Any other questions, comments?
Frank, you're awesome.
All right, well done, appreciate it.